Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning and infrastructure committee on Wednesday, the 8th of May. Please make sure your phones are turned off or put aside. The first thing is our apologies, apologies from councillor Heatherington.
Great, thank you.
And that's it, okay?
Yeah.
Any declarations of interest?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 5.5.
I thought that would be fine. Right.
Sure, let's note this, Maureen.
Okay. The minutes of the last meeting on the 3rd of April is... Anybody?
Propose that there, anyone?
You propose?
I'll check there.
Oh, councillor Austin. Second. Um, vote on that, please.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, a vote, yes.
In favour, yes.
Now, the highways improvement challenge, my last minute. The reason I want to bring this was because we've suddenly got this lot of money that us here have very little influence over how it's spent, I believe. I don't know who will. And one of the criteria is safety. So, the big plan would be to get the 20 mile an hour speed limit. The lesser plan would be to do some individual crossings and...
And other...
Yeah. Bollards, Turnus Street and all that sort of stuff. Does anyone want to talk about it, councillor Orban?
Yes, it does.
No, no, go ahead, councillor.
I need to say, you're talking about 20 mile an hour zones and I think we would need to be very specific as to where those go. My own personal view is that we should try to concentrate on 20 mile an hour limits, where there are schools, where there is fast running traffic, and to be strictly pick those areas for that to be done. I think we will have a lot more success with that than we will if you just go for a generic area of 20 mile an hour. So that's just my point of view on that. And I think you're quite right. I think there's a lot of areas where we need separate crossings or whatever, that should then intend to... And if they're in the same location as where you want the 20 mile an hour, that would then restrict it even further. So for me, that would be the way forward, Chair.
Okay. Councillor Austin.
I've been in contact with KCC highways with my planning change hat on because one of our things on our action plan was to distribute 20s plenty literature and stickers and so on. And I asked KCC about this because I didn't want to tread on their toes. And they said, no, no, we don't want you to do this as a town councillor. And I said, why? And we had a lot of correspondence back and forth at the end of last year in the autumn. And then I picked it up again recently, having realised that the email that I thought I'd sent, I'd only sent in my head and not actually ever got back to them about... Because they said, well, we can give you stuff about 30 mile an hour limits in places where you know there's speeding. And they was going to pick that up. And I've only just recently done that. But one of the things that they said was that the criteria they use for 20 mile an hour is, is it realistically likely to be adhered to? Because they can't place it, nobody... It's got to be self-sustaining. And therefore, the places where we're worried about speeding might be the very places that they think we shouldn't have a 20 mile an hour limit. But we might want something else specifically around areas like schools, crossings, that kind of thing. We might want... I know there are other parts of Kent where they have specific restrictions near schools.
That, no, don't.
But we... I was going to say, you know, like Margate, like, you know, like other places where there are, where there appear to be an awful lot more 20 mile an hour limits popping up all over the place than we have here. And it appears that KCC is willing now to have some kind of a meeting with us to talk about this, which seems to be a step forward. But I think we might need to think of some different strategies, some 20 mile an hour places, but also some specific school safety crossing-y places as well. Because I don't think that one size will fit all as far as they're concerned.
Councillor. I've just spent three days, four days in London, in Orban's, though, where there is a huge array of traffic calming and restrictions, including yours. And I know that people, there are some people that moan about what Sadiq Khan's done, but I absolutely fully support everything he's done. Because as a visitor to a place I used to live, there is a reduction in emissions, that, you know, the air is cleaner, where there's 20s plenty, the traffic flows. There's a particular spot that I sometimes get caught on because you come off the North Circular. And you have to be really aware of the fact you're going to hit 20s plenty if you come here. So you get, you soon get clobbered and you soon learn. There's a number of junctions where you can't turn right on or out of it between 7 and 10 in the morning to keep the traffic going. We went on a bit of a tour round Forest Gate to back to where my grandparents were, and there were certain roads we just couldn't get down. And it seems to me that those streets have now become pedestrian and home owner friendly. We just parked the car and walked to where we wanted to be. So I don't think we... I think what they've done in London, and they've got a huge amount of money to do it, is that it wasn't just bits and pieces. There was some joined up thinking and a strategy, which has taken 20 years to do this. So I don't think, I think whatever we request them to do, we need to stick to our plan. And it needs to be sort of like a 10, 20 year programme going forward. Certainly for me, we've got to get 20s plenty on some of our roads where people have been killed and seriously injured. And we've got to get some safe crossing places.
Well, this is actually a sort of town-wide issue, I think, because everybody contributes to that. So the suggestion is that we bring it to a full council. So that at least everybody knows what the...
Everybody from every ward, so the chair would be present. I think that's the call.
Yeah. Councillor Austin.
If I just check as a matter of fact, didn't we discuss this at full council last year? Didn't, when we were first talking about highways improvement, didn't we agree? And I'm not saying we necessarily agreed that 20s, 20 mile an hour zone would be our priority, but we certainly agreed that it was important to be asking for a town centre 20 mile an hour zone, didn't we? And it was on the list.
Yeah, you discussed it, I believe, at council. And each member was going to come back to the town clerk with priorities for her to feed into the hip. KCC, at the time, were asking for five priorities from RTC, which is small, and we've got more than five wards. But it appears from the town clerk's report that they will take more and make it wards and make it based. But that would be one for each ward, one priority, basically. The matter of the school crossing that the parents wanted to have at Clarendon and Chatham Grammar School, council committed 5,000 to that, so you've still got that. And the school matched that. However, KCC are saying the cost is starting at 21,000, which means the parents are, you know, the possibility of fundraising 11,000 is quite, you know, it's quite heavy for parents to take over. So you definitely have discussed this.
Sorry, Green was first.
Oh, you were first. I have closely looked at the crossing, at that crossing issue where Chatham and Clarendon is. And your main issue will be, where are you going to put the crossing? Because the kids, how massively down a number of roads. For me, the issue there is, it's the narrowness of the pavement and you can't do anything about that apart from slow the traffic down, which the traffic lights do. But if you put a crossing on the High Street instead of Chatham Street, or you, the kids will just go that way because kids will naturally do that. I think what would happen is flashing lights and 20s plenty when the kids are coming down would put to hit all the areas.
Yeah. If I could just interrupt, the issue that the parents have is higher up Chatham Street. That's where they're fundraising for a crossing, not at that junction where I think there ought to be. Because I could make a video of kids getting nearly killed every morning crossing four-way junctions.
Knowing as I know, as soon as you put a crossing in, they won't wait, they'll just go another route, they'll go further down the crossing. So I think there, there needs to be, like you have in junior schools, flashing lights when the kids are there. Because it's like a tsunami of kids. There's absolutely hundreds of them piling down the street.
But it's all day and you get the parents pushing buggies up to whatever that school is up there, the infant school on the narrow pavements. People have to walk in the road and they come up, they're a terrible lick, they really do. I mean, I tried with KCC, but they weren't interested. Yes.
I was saying, that's a sort of frame setting quietly, but that is my second time with KCC. If they listen to the local member, whoever that is, the question that they always want to do at the bottom of Chapel Road, where the letterbox is, that would slow the traffic up in the High Street. Instead of that, they've done a hard, hard-dig measure up the top end, up the Farleys. Most of the people that live that road, most of the students or school people use that crossing. And that would benefit slowing the traffic down, which everybody complains about in the High Street. I mean, so I had an arrangement to meet the headmaster, I think 2020, to him, because he'd got in touch. I went to meet him and he couldn't make it because he got held up in traffic around Sandic, which is understandable. But that's the thing that's been ongoing.
Well, we know, Trevor, but we depend on our KCC councillors to push it. You have much more power than we do. By the way, that post box was taken out by a van.
It'll be replaced, isn't it?
What? No?
No one will let us. That's where, that's where that question should be. That's where the bulk of the student, if they'd done that first time around, and of course when Farleys closed down, you've got a block of flats up there, not many students go across that, there, you stand at the bottom end.
We know where we want to cross things.
That's what they should have done when I told them in the first place.
Well, how do we persuade our KCC councillor to organise it?
Well, I don't get much response from KCC because everything's up at there at the moment. Because I was outspoken, I got suspended for telling them at KCC what people's concern on Sandic. So I got suspended for 21 days and all I'm trying to do is to speak up for all of us. Anyway, it's ongoing. Every time, because I go to KCC, I see a sandwich, I see a certain individual there. I think that's the person, I've always worked well with him. I think most people know who I'm talking about.
Well, I think...
And he's never there because he does so many hours overtime and they don't pay him his time off. So that's the biggest problem at the moment. I want a site visit, I've asked many a time, a complete survey of our roads, the white lining, the separate crossings, everything in Mandret needs to be covered, every road is covered.
Well, let's move on to go forward from here. And I think councillor Orban's...
So I think we've covered what I was going to say, then, yeah.
Of schools, actually.
Yeah. Whatever we get, it's got to be enforced. So KCC have done enforced, they haven't got the enforcement powers on the highway. It's the police who've got those powers to deal with speeding. So I think what we need as well, I think that we should make, I'm going to make a proposal, if it's okay, Chair, that we move this, we move this forward to full council.
Yes.
But also, I would like to put a recommendation within that, is that any conversation that we have with KCC must include the local chief inspector. Because if we don't, nothing's ever going to get enforced. So I think we need to know what we're trying to achieve.
Can you sell that online meeting follow? And may I ask specifically about, because KCC is saying it's up to the police to enforce it, and the police just in our case, we can't.
I know. But that may well be the case, but I think we have to, if we don't do it, at least try to gather around a table to discuss the issues and the problems that we have in the town in relation to speeding vehicles and especially schools, as we talked about, you know, it's a waste of time. Because you can get all the 20 mile an hour limits you like, whatever, but if it's not enforced, it's a waste of time.
Well, this group of 16, they are going together to spend the money, is supposed to include the police and Slatterton and the MP.
But if we do it like a full council, Chair, then we can ask, we can ask the town clerk to do the, to do the content.
Councillor Austin, can we ask other areas, can we ask our colleagues, fellow councillors that we know in other areas about how they've managed to get, places where they have the flashing lights, the 20 mile an hour, the speed cameras and whatever around schools, how have they managed to fund that? Where does the money come from? If we could gather a bit of information about what might be out there.
Well, again, we could ask, we could ask the town clerk as part of the, part of this, try and find that out. I think that would be a good idea.
Let's, let's...
Tunbridge.
Yeah, let's pick the brains of our colleagues in other places. I'll ask my colleague in Mason, because I know they're up there.
Councillor Green spoke to me, he wanted to get the town council to fund a portable flashing sign. I don't know how much it was, that we could move to different places. It would only be a sort of interim stopgap. I mean, we certainly need it in Dunton Park Drive.
Sorry, Chair, I think, one, you've got to see whether that's actually legal to do.
Oh, I think it is.
Well, I'm just saying, we need to find out whether, not we think it is, we need to find out whether it's legal, who's going to do it, when are they going to do it, how often are they going to do it? So I think there's, I think there's a lot to be discussed. It's very nice to have a nice little flashy lights somewhere that says 20, 20, 20, but at the end of the day, someone's got to do it, and who's going to do it?
Oh, there'll be plenty of them, isn't there?
Yeah, but, but again, if we're talking about you putting yourself at risk and it's safety, so we need to ensure that we do that.
TDC has the mobile signs that we've had up on Canterbury Road, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which are doing nothing useful at all.
Oh, right.
And are just sat around. They put them out because they got them during Covid for precautions and whatever, within collaboration with KCC, as I understand. And when I asked, why have we got this thing that says, you know, park only in designated spaces and whatever, and could it please say welcome to Ramsgate? And they did actually introduce something that said welcome to Ramsgate. But there's no research behind it saying it makes any difference. It was just a question of, well, we've got these signs and we'd like to use them. So maybe we could work to see, to use them a bit more help.
Yeah, I'll talk to Richard Phipps. I mean, Dunton Park Drive, even what's his name, McKinley, has written to them and that they say, oh, no, it's not suitable because what they were saying about...
They did say we might be able to get some signage about reminding people that there was 30 mile an hour limits in place. But that's, that's not really what we need, is it?
Well, when we did the measurements, we had the wires across the road, that most people were doing more than 30, which is one reason why they won't introduce, let us have a 20.
Exactly, because there's no chance.
Yeah. Anyway, so...
Yes, Chair, I was just going to say, I've proposed. Need a second, if you...
A second, that we, what's the post, what we take, that we in full council?
I get a full council and a...
I'll be in the...
Yeah.
I've got involvement, right, okay.
Vote on that for one.
Vote on that, Chair.
Oh, yes, all in favour.
May I ask something else about this, Chair? Which is, is it possible for us also to add as a second priority, if you will, further discussion about the inverted commas, pedestrianised zone, where you take your life in your hands walking through? Because the fact that we have a pedestrianised zone that's not pedestrianised and the cars speed up at the end of summer, the day or night, does seem to me to be an accident waiting to happen again. And there are other areas, again, where the pedestrianised zone means a pedestrianised zone and ours doesn't.
Well, one of my priorities would be getting those bollards they've got in Canterbury that rise up and down.
They cut the...
Never, never get those. We're not allowed those, we weren't allowed those where the gate is. That's why we've got the gate.
That was because of what was underground, apparently.
No, it wasn't.
I've put it to Rebecca.
I seem to remember that the only reason Canterbury have got them is because they're a potential terrorist target. They got the cathedral.
And also, that's private land.
Well, something, some industry, and even...
Something, something just to stop, just...
I mean, at the moment, they've got scaffolds up this building and there is no sign whatsoever that there is a pedestrian zone that you're not meant to turn.
Signage could be better.
Pedestrianised zone. And I...
Did you inform them?
I queried it and they said, oh, we have to make a proposal for it.
Might I propose that as a secondary priority for this council, we also add that and that we take that discussion to full councillors?
Yeah, I'll second that and I think that's all right, Chair.
Yeah, that's good. Right.
Vote on that.
Yep. Oh, in favour, yes, two hands, yes.
That's good.
Do we want to do against and abstain because we're not getting votes?
Anybody abstaining or voting against?
No.
Maureen, do you want to abstain?
No, I'm saying, people's hands aren't going up, so...
No, no, they're guests, they're not part of the...
They're not voting.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You're on the actual...
Councillor Orban's on the commission. Oh, she has that one.
That's why, very nice.
Sorry. How about you, Doolitle?
Thank you.
Forget you, you're not...
I'm making notes.
Oh, good on you. Sorry, darling, for my mistake. So can we move on to the planning applications, please?
Okay, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, one of us. The first application is 81 Grange Road, change of use and self-contained flat, use class C3, the tattoo studio, use class... How do you pronounce that?
Suey generous.
Suey generous. Called in by councillor Nix, Nixley. Thank you.
Remind myself of this.
It's already, they've already done it, haven't they?
They have, yes. So this is actually Central Harbour.
In our, yes.
Not, but it's obviously on our boundary.
I went and had a look at it and saw that there was already a sign up.
Retrospective, then, isn't it?
It is.
Well, certainly the sign is up, I don't know whether...
Oh, we don't know whether it's occupied.
Don't know.
People in the area have been commenting about parking, it's always an issue, isn't it? Hours and so on and so forth. So obviously, I mean, I live near there and I've gone past it and I haven't seen anything untoward or something, so I wanted to bring it up just to bring it to the wider group. But I do realise it's not in my ward, but my ward opposite it and have asked me to look into it.
Okay, this is the top, sorry, Chair.
Shall I, councillor?
This is, this is the top end of Grange Road.
It's, yes, it's sort of like nearer the co-op, it's opposite the run of shops there. It's a bit of a rail road, isn't it?
Where the rail road was standing, come up on that corner.
And so, and people were so concerned about the fact that it's a very, although their shop's opposite, it's a residential area, that particular road. But I mean, you know, you could argue, well, their shop's opposite.
They're hot shops.
I just wanted to bring it for people, too.
Could I ask why there are two orange...
Orange circles.
Trapeziums or...
Aliens.
Or circles?
It's a weird shaped building.
Yeah, it's a very weird shaped building.
I can add some...
Yeah. Oh, I see. So there is also, sorry, sorry to interrupt, just for the... There is also a tattoo shop almost opposite, that's the other thing I was going to say.
You can't have enough tattoos. This, I looked at this, because it's in our ward, and the shop is already there. Yeah. So it's not retrospective, it's retrospective in terms of it wants to expand what it's doing.
Oh, I see, so they've got them.
It's always been a tattoo shop.
Ah, okay.
On this side, the tattoo shop's always been there and what they want to do is expand.
Right.
So I'm not quite sure, there must be a real need for tattooists. There are hundreds of them. So, no, I couldn't particularly see any problem with it apart from we do lose some residential property and it's a bit strange, it's quite big.
That is my concern, is, you know, we haven't got enough...
Tattoo shops.
Uh, rented properties and stuff, so, you know, losing a self-contained flat, I don't know what it is, one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, that's a concern. But I think, yeah, it's one of those.
I know, that's why I'm thinking it's like all...
Can we have a proposal from someone, please? Have we no comments?
I'll, I'll make a proposal. All right. So we have, generally speaking, we have no concerns about it expanding into a larger retail service, whatever. But I do have concerns that we're losing a residential property. And I do have concerns that maybe this might be a live work situation, given, I can't, I've not known a tattoo shop be this large. I don't know how we're going to word that, but I suppose that we can't assume that something might be doing...
There's nothing wrong with having a live work situation.
In which case it needs to be mixed use, doesn't it, rather than all retail? And it stops paying its council tax if it moves entirely to that.
Yeah, but that would be the...
Councillor, Chair.
It was John Kirby's post office shop, that's what it was, a post office. And it does concern me that we're losing accommodation above. I can't see a tattoo shop, there's enough empty shops in Mamsgate with tattoos there. So even if it's a one-bedroom flat, it's still a one-bedroom flat.
I agree, I'm concerned.
And near there is a separate crossing as well, it's going to be quite busy.
I, I'm sorry.
Councillor Nix.
So just to remind you, parking around the area is really, really tight because we have a lot of, you know, narrow roads onto a main road, and there's a lot of residential properties on that Grange Road which don't have parking themselves, they have to go down the side road. It is very difficult for parking.
Do we take that into account? I don't know, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Because I didn't realise at first that it was an existing, there was an existing one and this is an extension of it. I take it there hasn't been any problems with the current situation, so therefore I don't, I don't expect it's going to double its trade.
No.
Because he has an extension down, extension of it down onto the ground floor. So whilst there is a loss of accommodation, I can't see that it's, in planning terms, that it's, that it's going to be a problem. I think a change of use would actually be acceptable.
Yeah.
So I've proposed that we take, remind you.
We have a...
Oh, beg your pardon, sorry.
It hasn't been seconded.
Councillor Wing's proposal is that RTC generally has no concerns over the expansion of the business, however, does have concerns about the loss of living accommodation.
Yep. Okay. Right, all those, thank you.
Your next, your next application is Seven Prospect Terrace. It's a bay tree that they wish to fell, it's in a conservation area, called in by councillor Wing. The reason for felling the bay tree is because it's growing through the wall called damage. Councillor Wing called this in because it is in the conservation area and Ramsgate's poor tree coverage, which is 4%.
I just have, this one came in before.
I was going to say.
The same address where they've already got rid of one. So I have real concerns about the previous application, felled a tree, the pear tree, the ornamental pear tree.
Yeah.
Okay. And now, I don't, I don't understand why, we've now got a second application removing this tree. I suspect that they thought because the girth of the tree wasn't a certain diameter, that they could get away with just cutting it down. So although I don't think there's anything we can do about this, it's the loss of another tree, there is a nest in that tree, there's no bird in the nest, it was last year's nest. But for me, that, that proves that that tree had a, was a, was an ongoing habitat for birds. I don't think there's... Uh, I don't think there's anything we can do, but, you know, I just think we need to urge, we need to express our concern about the loss of trees in Ramsgate and a failure to mitigate against the loss of trees if they need to be taken down.
Councillor Nixie.
If we cast our minds back to the pear tree, one of the reasons for them asking the removal of it was because they couldn't get their cram along the double buggy, along the pathway, if you remember that, um, which I'm more than sure they probably can at the moment now that the pear tree is gone. It saddens me that the pear tree is gone and they didn't think about how they could possibly, um, look into managing the tree, which obviously trees need, as does this. Um, I suspect it would be removed regardless of what we say. I would like to know their, um, plans going forward as to what they would put place or the pear tree's place, because we seem to have lost two trees in a conservation area. Um, as for a proposal, well, I mean, I'd rather they didn't, but if they were going to do it, I would like to know, you know, what, what they were.
Is this a proper tree?
It looks a bit.
It's a bay tree.
I know it's a bay tree, but it's, it's all squabbling, it is very squabbling.
They, they grow up from the bottom, they, they.
Yes, I know, we've got one.
Yeah.
It has been cut back severely.
Yes. Yes, councillor.
Um, well, I, I, I would say you're quite right, I think, I think that the, the, they will get consent to felled this because, um, it is, it's neither pretty nor ornamental nor, nor giving any enhancing.
And growing into them.
Enhancing it, but, hang on a minute, that's not finished yet.
Yeah.
Um, but I agree, uh, in, in a slightly different way to councillor Nixie is that we, uh, could, uh, advise that we have no problem with this being removed, but that another tree is planted in its place.
Councillor Austin.
Might I suggest an amendment to that, which is Ramsgate Town Council is regretted the loss of trees, particularly in the conservation area, um, and would like to know what plans the council is to.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I would have thought we lost, that being in a conservation area isn't that important.
We'll leave that bit out then, because we always regret.
We've left the loss of trees in.
Yeah, wherever they are in view of our low tree cover, um, we want to know.
Councillor Shon.
Um, multi-fury land.
No, it's suspect terrorists, suspect terrorists on the south wall.
These streets.
Bay trees are painting them, bloody arse it is, can't we just replace another tree?
Yeah, they'll get permission because it's.
But it looks awful, in the tidy, doesn't it?
Don't train them, anyway.
Well, that's what I was about to say, I mean, the, the reason for doing this this time is, is saying about the wall, I, I mean, anybody that's been to my garden, bearing in mind I open it for the National Garden Scheme, and I have a massive bay tree of which we maintain, is right next to Flint Wall and has been for several years, it's not actually going to do anything to the wall, what you need to do obviously is, is garden, is take those runners out, which is just a quick clip off, so it's not going to take the wall out, let's not think a bay tree will, because it's, it's, it's going to shoot, but it still wants to grow upwards, so you just take those shoots away. So it's, it's not looking particularly nice, again, because it's not being looked after, well, nothing is going to be unless you do look after it, it's a garden, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a living thing, you have to maintain it. So I'm not sure, again, we need, all I'm saying is we need to be careful of what their reason for wanting it taken out is, because I don't think that's necessarily the case.
What they said because of the wall, yeah.
I think it's another factor. Yeah, because we don't know what the state of the wall is like, even when the tree was planted, you know, it could be run down, horrible wall, we don't know, so in which case you can blame the tree for the wall, but it's probably the wall.
Yes.
It is not, anyway.
I should point out, we've also got an application to remove the front wall and replace it with railings, which actually I don't think is a bad idea because the wall is not thin enough and a number of the other houses have, and it will probably be more like it was originally, but there's no mention of this cycle in that application. I think for me, I mean, I think, I think we accept a proposal by Steve, but the concern I have is why not, the other tree was in a sense more salvageable.
Yes.
It wasn't an issue at all. Why are there two separate applications? And I just get the feeling that we're, they've, they've, they've not played fair in a sense, and application to remove two trees is worse than two applications to remove separate trees for a few months apart.
It's their entitlement.
Well, they have to pay for every application, so.
No, uh, if you listed, no. If it's a listed building, so I think their applications are free, aren't they?
No, no, it's a tree, although the tree within the grounds, because they've done this in the conservation area and not a listed building.
Right, do we have a proposal?
You have a proposal from councillor Oldbrayne, RTC has no problem with the removal of trees, but another tree, like another tree to be planted, um, we always regret the loss of trees and would like to know what plans there are to replace the bay, I will tidy that up, yeah.
Okay.
With second.
All those, take your time.
Going to need a second person.
And that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Right, moving on, you have.
Just explaining to Trevor, we, we reduce the number of meetings we attend because it just got out of order and required a lot of.
Met with a town clerk.
Yeah, that's, so don't have voting rights. Um, the next two applications are next door to each other, so I suggested when I called them in that we perhaps try to look at them together. They are the Sunrise Fish and Chip Shop and the next door, the next door shop in York Street. And they're, and looking at the presentation of the applications, they appear to come from the same owner.
Okay, members, you have twenty-two Queen Street, replacement of timber front, of shop front, this aluminium front, shop front, it's in the conservation area. Reason for replacement, the shop front is currently dilapidated and suffering from deterioration of the timber features, the poor look of the shop front is affecting business. Called in by councillor Austin, reason for calling on the grounds of proposed change of building materials in the town centre conservation area. Do you want me to read out York Street?
Yes. Well, I think they're different, aren't they? Replacing the shop front on one building and building up on the next one.
The next one is extensions.
Oh, yeah.
I think we should, all right, deal with one at a time and maybe we can come back up to you, Chair.
Absolutely.
I mean, personally, I don't, they used to be, they used to be. Because we need to keep them, it's a beautiful building with lots of brickwork details and we're going around the corners, um, if we want people to come to our town.
That is a prominent location.
Beg your pardon, I've got to go.
We've, we've just had TDC's shop front guide to look at and what happens is you then go to the planning committee and people say, oh, that's fine, well, I don't think it is mine and the fact that we've got the shop front guide now should give us backing to say, this is a historic shop front that can be restored and later smart and attractive, but should not be replaced with aluminium.
No, now, the, the shop next door, which is the whole shop, it was, um.
Whole shop, yeah.
Yeah, has got an aluminium frame, but because they have, it doesn't mean to say, yeah, that this one should have. I mean, yes, councillor.
Having had a look at, having had a look at the drawings, Chair, um, I totally agree, I think aluminium is the wrong, is the wrong materials within the conservation area. I certainly object to it, there are better materials out there if they want it to be more sustainable, um, and I, and I think, uh, because aluminium is unattractive and, um, I'm not saying that they're cheaper, better, I don't, I don't know, but there are better materials out there that can be used in the conservation area and it's our council's duty to, um, either maintain or enhance, not for it to go the other way. So I propose that we object to the application on the grounds that the use of aluminium to replace the windows is, uh, the wrong, wrong materials.
Do you have a second?
Uh, can I just ask, I just wanted to speak first, uh, I mean, I totally agree and that if you speak to, uh, Michael Foley, uh, a good wooden replacement will outlast aluminium anyway if it's maintained and look better, so it's not in keeping, it's in a prominent location, they do fabulous fish, fish and chips, mind, they do.
They do, indeed.
And they don't, and they've reduced their plastics, but I, I still think we need to object to this. Might I, um, endorse councillor Oldbrayne's proposal, but suggest that we also add that we would refer the applicant to the TDC shop front guide.
Yeah.
They may not have known, they may not have known about this, I'm just.
We have a vote. All those in favour of rejecting, yeah, reject, object and suggesting.
Objection, yes. We can't reject it, we can only object it. Yeah, I should, I should not allow it.
Okay, then the next door, which is, as you say, owned by.
Number two York Street.
The same people. Now, that shop front is quite fancy wood.
Yes, quite attractive and they want to do.
Yeah, they've just done a lot, quite a lot of work on this.
They want to come up with that as well. This should be the cafe to the chip here.
Chip shop, yes. Yes, and now it's a very fancy barber shop.
Okay, members, this is for a erection of a second and third floor extension together to accommodate one three-bedroom flat together with first floor rear extension, it's in the conservation area, as you know. Councillor Austin called this in, um, as it's in the conservation area and possible overdevelopment, thank you.
Where is the extension?
So, sorry, so you've got that there.
Yeah.
Go to the next one.
Here we are.
Whack.
Right, but the extension, is that on the rear elevation, is that the extension?
It's the York Street side, isn't it?
Yeah.
In which case it's huge, yes, it's huge.
It's crazy.
Um, does that back on to Charlotte Court?
Uh, sort of. Yeah, the alleys in that, I can't, we need the rest of the shops, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a bit further down, isn't it?
Could you pull aside?
There we go.
There's the alleys. I think you've got the, the, have you got the.
Four A, four B.
Yeah, you've got the York Street flowers.
Yeah.
What's next to that?
Let me have a look at the road.
Taxi office.
Taxi office is the other.
That's what I'm saying, like you said, York Street flowers.
Taxi office.
Yeah, look, look, poor little York Street flowers, only two.
Than a pub.
Yeah, the hoveling, yeah.
Yeah, so. To be honest, I love that bed, to be honest, but.
Well, there'll be windows on the side that overlook the, the poor little flower shop.
They'll overlook the shops opposite.
Paper shop. And the disruption in that street when they're building that.
Disruption in that street, Trevor, when you're building.
All the street, the disruption there.
Oh, they would need to do, um, a management plan for the built.
That they'll then ignore.
Hmm? That they then ignore. So the team.
Personally, Chair, I, I made a proposal and, and that is.
Yeah.
That I certainly have no objection to that, um, providing as conditions that materials are suitable for the, for the conservation area.
With the shop and the front.
Yeah, for both. And, and also, as, as just mentioned, um, that there is a condition that a management, a traffic management plan must be put in place, uh, in order to.
I don't call it traffic, anyway. It's highways. Could I just ask, rubbish?
Rubbish?
Rubbish.
Where is it? Where's your bin storage?
Where's your bin storage? Because round to the back of Charlotte Court, there's always, there's already a massive issue with bins.
I can't actually see.
Can't see.
The extension.
Some bin storage onsite.
Come on, Dean, you know we're going to ask this, so where's the bin storage, lovey?
Where's the bin store?
You must have preempted this one, because the last thing we want out is bags left out.
We need a roof, roof plans.
So, can, so can you, you just point to the, the extended rear elevation? Yeah, there. No, I've got this up. I can't think what's on the other side of that and whether it's cutting off anyone's light, that's the only thing I have.
Old road up.
Yes, Dean, is there presently residential above it? Is there presently a flat above it? Yeah, so my concern is rubbish. Yeah. Where is the bin store? So can we add that?
We can, you, yeah.
The problem we are concerned about.
That, uh, yeah.
That the materials are appropriate to the conservation area and there is adequate bin storing.
Yeah, and a, and a.
On-site bin.
Traffic management plan during, during construction.
I can't remember.
I know, just maybe.
Yeah, no, but you're right, that is, that one in the high street on the corner, that pilgrims, obviously says.
Yeah. Here we go.
Yeah, so have we got a proposal?
Do the plans incorporate areas to store and aid the collection of waste?
No.
Have arrangements been made in a separate storage and collection of recyclable waste?
Yes. What do they mean?
Are success team, waste collection.
We don't know, but I think we need to.
Clarification about the present waste situation.
And future.
And, but, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot, lot of problems around that because they, all those places round there used to put their stuff in.
Cavishy.
In those bins there and that's been stopped, so I don't know where.
I know Rebecca's trying to work on that whole area and see what she can do about preventing the commercial process. They need to be screened in some way.
I don't know whether, but I can't work out what's up the check. Anyway, we have issues with the bin store, have we got a proposal on the second?
Yes.
Have we got a second, the last second there?
Yeah.
Do we have all in favour?
Chair just seconded, yeah.
Finally, we have Ivor Thompson, Muslins Limited, a hundred range road, direction of.
So.
Um, direction of a four-storey building to facilitate the creation of nine two-bed flats. With associated access landscaping, cycle and bin stores following the.
National existed office.
Um, Chair, if I may, um, did we, we previously, uh, was against, um, against this application, um, and it was refused, we, we, uh, recommended refusal on the grounds that it's not in keeping with the street scene in a conservation area and the growth over development, lack of parking provision. This one, I understand, is they are taking the rear out, part of the rear fencing out or something of that nature, to be able to gain access for parking, um, which is fine, but it still doesn't, it still doesn't go in with what we refused it previously.
But is it a conservation area? No, I don't think it is. Um, the building.
Why did we, why did we?
And the building next door is a sort of nineteen sixties brick-built.
I wouldn't, I would have said if it was a conservation area before.
How's that, Dean?
Not a count, it's not a conservation area.
I thought somebody just.
Said it there in the, in the previous.
You see, I think that's really ugly and it's hideous, it's like a prison.
Yeah.
And we ought to knock it down and bleeding, it's definitely, sorry.
Yeah, it's not.
I mean, the existing one is really ugly.
Oh, I see, no, I think the existing one is a traditional building of its kind.
It's something to cover.
It could be more attractively.
I think, I still think it's over development at the site.
Massive over development.